So I want to say, I think Okanagan County is really fortunate to have so many candidates who are willing to enter public service. The job of county commissioner is one of the most difficult jobs in government. Some of you may know, but in case you don't, the commissioner is run by district in the primary and then they run countywide in the general election. So on August 2nd, when you get your ballot, or when you get your ballot before August 2nd, if you live in District 1, you'll have one candidate, one race to vote in, and in District 2, you'll have one race to vote in. And if you live in District 3, like I do, you won't have any race for county commissioner to vote in. Then in the general election in November, you'll have two different county commissioner races, District 1 and District 2, and you vote for both those races. So the format for this evening is that each candidate will have five minutes to introduce themselves and why they're running. And they'll be touching on what they think the most important issues are. After that's done, we have a list of prepared questions, and each candidate will have one minute to answer. And I would like to introduce at this time our timekeeper, Monica Rosson. And thank you, Monica. So Monica has a card she'll hold up when you have 30 seconds left, and then she has a really nice star when your time is up. So if you please try and keep to the timeframe. We'll be done at 8 o'clock, and if you want to, if the candidates have time and want to stay and you want to visit with them or ask them questions individually, feel free to do that. So does anybody have any questions?
Want to run from the floor?
Not tonight, we're not going to have questions from the floor.
Hello, everybody. My name's Ted Reimel. I'm in District 1. I live in Okanagan, Washington, where I was born and raised. You know, tonight, I think I want to talk about what I see this job as being and where we, and how we can get there. My family and I own four different houses in Okanagan County. We own a business. You know, I was raised here. My parents are going to live here for the rest of their life, and I've got a daughter, she's four, and you know, I don't see her moving away anytime soon. And what we've done is we've invested in this community. You know, as with all of us, we've all put down our money, our hearts, our jobs. This is where we choose to spend our time. And it's the job of the county commissioners to manage that investment wisely for us. You know, whether it's our land, whether it's the economy, all of those things take a prudent, you know, steady hand to keep us moving forward so that we can do our jobs, so that we can, you know, run our businesses, so that we can raise our families. And I don't necessarily see that happening right now. And you know, what I'd like to change is that I'd like to see us first get back to trusting the people who work, who run the county. As I talk to people who work in the maintenance divisions, the road divisions, or people who work in the court systems, people who work for public health, we've got a lot of breakdown in the way that the government's running right now. There's a lot of mistrust, there's a lot of feelings like, you know, we can't work as a cohesive group. And what we have to realize is that Okanagan County has been a huge success in eastern, north-eastern Washington historically. We are the largest county, we've got the most prosperity, you know, of the counties around us for a reason. It's because actually this is a county that can be well managed, and it has been well managed in the past, and that's something that I want to move forward and continue to do. So what we need to do is we need to get back to getting our, you know, the people who run our government, creating trust amongst all of those people, so that they know that they're working for a government that they can count on. You know, there are problems with our natural resources, and that's definitely something that we need to be looking at. I do think that that's one place where really we're heading in the right direction, in that we do need to be giving the powers that be, whether they be local, federal, or state, to do a better job of managing our forests. I don't think we can make it, you know, all the way there in one push. Some people say privatize the whole thing, or some people say, you know, let's bring that back into county, into county possession. I don't think that we're going to get there, you know, now, I don't think that we're going to get there necessarily in my lifetime. If we do, that's going to be beyond the scope of a county commissioner. But what a county commissioner can do is they can go to those people, they can go to the state, they can go to the feds, and they can say, "You have got to pay attention to what's going on here. You have got to manage our forests better, and you have to allow us to create an economic driver here that historically has been ours to run." So I think that that's one place where myself and the current commissioners really can agree. You know, one of the places where we really can't agree is the litigation that we find ourselves in, in this community. And I think it might be a good reason to have an attorney on the Board of County Commissioners coming up here, because right now, we're in a set of, you know, at least three different lawsuits that we don't need to be involved in. You know, we were just talking about the juvenile detention center, which is really the reason why I got into the race. I said, "This can't be moved. This is too important. You know, I've got to get in there." And the juvenile detention center is going to need work, one way or the other. It's going to stay here now, but it's still going to need a lot of work, and I think that having someone from the legal community on that project is going to be important. But beyond that, we are in a lawsuit for that, because the Superior Court of Okanagan County felt like their toes were being stepped on from the county commissioners. That's a, you know, judicial and, and the legislative bodies, they, they, they're not supposed to mix, and there's a reason for that. So we're in that lawsuit, we're still in the lawsuit for the, you know, Three Devils Road, which we had no business being a part of. You know, and now we've got this most recent lawsuit about the ATVs, which frankly, we can still have ATVs on the road. That's still something that we can get done. You know, as someone who was initially, you know, a little hesitant about that, I've looked, it doesn't cause a problem. It's a great, you know, it's a great benefit for people who want to ride their ATVs on the road. I think it's good for the economy, good for tourism. But what has to be done there is it just can't be, you know, write-off on the environmental terms. You have to actually go down the checklist, make sure that you're hitting all of those checks, make sure that we're not spreading around noxious weeds from, you know, someone's local farm to the road, and how are we going to deal with that? You know, those are all concerns that have to be addressed. Anyway, I'm for a well-managed government. This job should not be exciting if it's being done right. If you're going to go to a meeting for me, it's going to be about the economy.
Thank you, everyone, for showing up tonight. In 2015, I stood before all of you and the voters to ask for your support and your vote and to believe in me. I told you I would provide accountability, leadership, and responsibility in asking the tough questions. And I'm here today to let you know that I've done just that. So as, as I promised, I don't rubber stamp anything. I research and read and ask questions that helps me come up with the best decision that I can on the huge issues that we're dealing with. Sheila, you didn't introduce yourself. I'm sorry. I'm Sheila Kennedy. I'm running for District Number 1. I'm incumbent. Thanks, Monica. And we've made a lot of changes. We've added Wednesdays to our work schedule, and we're considering adding Thursdays as well. Since I've been elected, and as promised, I took a 10% pay cut, and I don't take the $8,000 in-county travel stipend. I'm not ready, I'm not willing to ask our staff to do things that I'm not willing to do, because my style of leadership is lead by example. And I work, this is a full-time job. I work 50 hours plus a week to get the job done that commissioners are required to do. Comp plan, shorelines plan, after 12 years, those are done. Our zoning will soon be completed. I'm the only candidate in District 1 with the established great working relationships with our state and federal agencies, and our state and federal representatives. State legislators approved $2.2 million for our communications project, and our congressional people have spent, or approved millions of dollars for our recovery efforts. This year alone, we're going to be putting $2.7 million back into our road infrastructure. Busiest year we've ever seen, because we have not taken that $500,000 leg shift. I have been asked to sit on FEMA committee and asked to address the issues for the individual assistance program. And we've been, we have been denied, two years in a row, the individual assistance program. And because of the current rules are established by areas of concentration or urban areas, so we shouldn't be penalized for living in rural areas. So we've got some draft legislation and policy for FEMA to consider. I'm the only candidate that knows, that has a knowledge of our complex budget system. We are balanced. It's required by state law to be balanced by the end of December every year. We've balanced that budget by not cutting staff, and we have not overspent our budget as been stated previously by opponents. We followed our treasurer's recommendation, transferred funds in case, the $500,000 reserve in case we ran into financial problems during our tight months of the year. We transferred $500,000 because our current expense payroll a month is $1.2 million. So to be ahead in the game, we transferred. As of today, we have not used one dime of that $500,000, and we're planning on putting that back. I have the union negotiations experience. Our current proposals right now are requesting a 3.5% increase for 2016, '17, and '18. And so we're, we're working on that. Unfortunately, with the two years of fire disasters, we can't just give everybody a raise. I don't want to raise taxes. We haven't so far. And in order to accomplish the raises, it would have to be through increasing taxes and putting them on the backs of our taxpayers. At this point, it's more important for us all to recover. I'm not, let's see, I guess it was, no, in 2013 was the last time all of our staff has had raises, and that was at a 2.5. I've got great working relationships with the tribe, our state and federal agencies. I'm pro-government. All I'm asking is, you know, the accountability from our state and federal agencies. I figure that I'm your liaison, working for you on behalf of the rules and regulations that are preventing us from, you know, doing some of the things that we need to do to help support private business, to help support the economic stability. And so obviously, our system is broken because of the last two fire disasters. We don't want to see any more flood in this county. We want to be able to promote our tourism and recreation and let people know that we're open for business, because King 5, you know, did their job to let everybody know of our disasters going on, but it left an impression with people that they don't want to come back, and they can't come here, stay, play, and spend their money. So we, I believe, you know, we've got excellent employees. Thank you.
My name is Chris Branch. I'm running as an independent, because I've seen a lot of partisan politics go on, and it seems to polarize folks. So I am in a position, I think, to offer something to both parties, and would prefer to do that than to take an extreme position either way. I currently work for the city of Orville. I'm the community development director. I've been in local government for 26 years. Can you hear me better now? And so that's one of the reasons I've been running as well, is because I think that I should share that experience and the knowledge with you. The public, after all, paid for my experience. I grew up in Okanagan County most of my life. I've lived 40 years plus in Okanagan County in my 61 years. I've worked in the orchards, I've worked in a ranch, I've worked in the woods. I was a logger for 12 years, or at least in the timber industry, because I did a lot of different things in the timber industry. And so I know what it's like to be on the ground, work, and I really appreciate hard work. In fact, some days I wish I was out working in the woods rather than sitting in an office with paper all piled up around me. And the reason I do have paper piled up around me, because in my work as a community development director, I'm actually working for you now. I do a lot of economic development work. I've been working very hard to keep the railroad intact in the Okanagan Valley. It's very important to our economy. And we're growing an economy in Orville, and it's a good thing we are, because on the other side of it, when a leg of the economy falls out from under us, we have something else to hold us up. So Orville really isn't at the bottom of the, or the, at the end of the line. It's actually in the middle of the world, and it plays a very great role in supporting this county economic development-wise. The other thing that I'd like to add to that is that the experience I have with, you know, in local government, I also do see some lack of trust in county government these days, and that really worries me, because Okanagan County and the cities and towns here are the closest government to the people. And if we don't work together to achieve what we need to achieve in community development, we're really not going to achieve anything. Agriculture won't be the backbone of this county if we don't pay close attention to the way we do our planning, the kind of community development planning and the comprehensive planning that we're doing today in Okanagan County, is, we'll be in conflict with agriculture. I'm really concerned about that. And I think it's something that we should take a closer look at. So one of the things I really want to do and really focus on is make sure that we have a very good public involvement program, something that we can share information with the public so that they know what we're doing, including the budget. Because I myself have looked into the budget, read it, read past budgets, and the concern I have with that is that there's not enough information, even introducing the budget to the public if you go look at it. There's not any explanation of where the money comes from or where the money goes. You just look at it, and if you want to figure something out, like, well, if we're not, if we're negotiating with the union, how much do we pay a lawyer to negotiate with the union? Could we be using those dollars in a better way? How much do we spend to protect ourselves from being sued because we're not planning properly? I'm a land use planner too, but I am actually first a community development planner. So those are real big concerns I have. And I don't think that we're going to do good economic development unless we address those issues, unless we're able to talk to the federal government and the state government. By the way, I do that myself. I have gone, I was in Washington DC a month ago, working for the county, and I actually have done quite a little work with the legislature to do some economic development work that's really helped us maintain the railroad. And so I just think that I'm probably one of the best candidates for the job. I think I can do it. I've been around county government for a long time, and so I just think that for prosperity of this rural county, I think that you should vote for me.
Okay, I want to thank you all for coming tonight there, and I want to introduce myself. I'm Ray Campbell, Commissioner from Second District. I live over in Mid-Hall Valley. Live on a ranch, second generation of that ranch there. Family homestead, part of my family homesteaded, great-grandparents homesteaded, up the hills out on the terrace, just after turning, like, in the century there. Been in agricultural industry and numerous industries in the valley there. And, can they hear? I could kiss this thing, come out there. Okay, I'll get my mouth up here again. Is that better? Okay.
Or can it be turned up, yank?
Oh, that's all right. I'll get, okay.
That's a good, that'll get it through, yeah.
This isn't complicated. Okay, when I ran in 2012, I had goals I wanted to get accomplished there, and I didn't accomplish all those goals. So that's why I'm rerunning again this, this term. My concerns there are, have been the economics of our county for a long time. And so I, I came into it with the, with the goal to expand our economic opportunities while protecting our custom culture of our county. In doing so, some of the accomplishments is we passed a comprehensive plan, and we're bringing our zoning ordinance forward to a near-future adoption, follow our, which will follow our subdivision ordinance. We're closing the gap on our shorelines and critical areas ordinance right now at this time. So those will hopefully be taken care of before the end of this year. That's been a long works, and it'll, it'll close the gap on a lot of concerns and questions here. My goals have been is to expand our natural resource industry on private lands as well as our state and federal lands there. I've worked, I have a vision of getting our timber industry back up in healthy fashion there, working with our ranchers on our grazing, our farmers and our horticulturists, and our tourist industry. That's while retaining responsible regulations to protect our environment to do so. Part of my efforts there on, on our federal lands is when I first came into office in 2013, I was asked to come back to Washington DC and testify on a bill before our Natural Resource Committee, House Natural Resource Committee. In 2013, I testified before Congress. It was on Bill HR 1526, it was Restoring Healthy Forests for Healthy Communities Act. In that, they recognized at the time the, the health of our forests were depleted and dangerous with bug infested, and, and they predicted the outcome of that was forest fires that we've been having there. So we're still, that, that legislation, it passed through the House in September of 2013. It didn't make it through the Senate, so it died, but it's been resurrected there again in the House Natural Resource Committee and through, through current legislation, HR 2647, which is the Resilient Federal Forest Act of 2015. And that has gone, that act, the others, has gone up, on up to the House and is working now on a companion bill in the US Senate that will hopefully get us back in the place where we can get our forests back into a healthy shape there, and so we can get ahead of these fires that are out there and get our resources back in, our natural renewable resources back into a revenue generating entity there. Our economy in this county is tested from every angle. The two fires of 2014 played havoc on us. We still don't know, and '15, we still don't know the end results of that. All we know is that we have an economy that's hurting. We need to take a look at what's out there and see what we can do to protect us and move us forward. So it's, it's an ongoing concern. I look at this every year when we sit down to our budget process, the months it takes to go through the budget bit by bit and determine where the funds are going.
I envision a county with a thriving economy where families are supported by well-paying jobs. I envision a county where we respect our public lands, ensuring they remain places we can visit and enjoy for generations to come. I envision Okanagan County as this place, a place where the local government has the citizens' best interests in mind and works for the good of the community at large. A place where people want to raise their families, a place people want to come and visit and recreate, a place to retire.
I can't see your name tag.
I'll be. Okay. It's part of my hook. And we have the opportunity to make Okanagan County a vibrant and healthy place. We just need our leaders to get us there. My name is Ashley Frasher. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I've spent the last seven years in Twist, and I'm running in District 2. Okanagan County covers a large area and has diverse characteristics and needs. The variety is one of its strengths. I look forward to working with local communities across the county to understand and respond to each area's unique needs. As county commissioner, I will prioritize listening and will work collaboratively with residents to develop policy for our region that reflects the will of the people. I will work hard for the citizens of Okanagan County to help our community prosper and thrive in the years to come. I want to first speak briefly about my background in order for you to better understand my values and beliefs and what experiences has shaped those. I came to Washington State in 2004 and attended the University of Puget Sound. In 2008, I graduated with a Bachelor's of Science. While I enjoyed those four years in Tacoma, I was eager to return to a rural town. I grew up in rural Vermont in a small town, not unlike the towns around here. The main economic driver was agriculture, with many blue collar jobs and lots of tourism. Many of the families have been working there for generations and were quite conservative in their politics. The '60s and '70s brought many liberal, educated people who wanted to get out of the rat race of the eastern seaboard. As in Okanagan County, this diversity of thoughts and beliefs led to conflicts in local politics, but I believe ultimately was a benefit to the area. My dad owned a heavy equipment business and has employed three to five guys on average for the last 30 years. My mom raised my sisters and me, as well as working in horse farms, mucking stalls and caring for the horses. By the time I graduated college, my older sister Sam had moved to Twist, and she now has a small dairy farm there. I found in Twist the same blend of ideas that I had grown up with and instantly felt at home. Addition to my older sister, my younger sister Ellie now lives in Twist with her two children, and I love the opportunity to be Auntie Ash. The reason that I decided to run for county commissioner has a lot to do with this backstory. As an idealistic teenager, I vowed to never be hypocritical. If I saw a problem or wanted change by golly, I wasn't just going to talk about it, I was going to do something. And I hate to admit that has not always been the case thus far. What I didn't know then is that it's way easier to talk than to act, and not everyone has the ability or the desire to step up and work towards the changes I believe need to happen. But at this point in my life, I do have the ability and the desire to step up and work towards those changes. I love this area, and I want to see it continue to thrive, and that does not happen by accident. It takes a lot of hard work, energy, and collaboration by many people and groups. There are numerous issues facing our county, and each resident probably has an opinion on the relative importance of those issues. Tonight, I will touch on a few that I believe are universal. Currently, I think the number one priority is focusing on the economic vitality of our county. I see this issue as twofold. I believe we need to have creative new industries, and we're to enhance and retain the jobs currently in county. We should not be working to privatize public sector jobs. And regarding the county budget, we must return to fiscal responsibility and oversight. Another issue that affects us all is public health. The county is currently ranked 37th out of 39, which means we are not adequately addressing this problem. We need to address poverty through education, job training, affordable childcare and housing, transportation options, and proper mental health care. An easy start to the solution is to have people with healthcare experience on the Board of Health. And the attendance tonight here is proof that the issue of open and transparent communication is as important to the, is important to the public as it is to me. The people of Okanagan County know what is best for them. It's the county commissioner's job to listen to the voters and to the best of their ability implement policy and decisions with public support. In my opinion, much time and energy and money could have been saved had the enormous amount of public input about the Three Devils Road and the juvenile detention center been honored. The county is currently in court over the comprehensive plan, the Three Devils Road, and another suit has been filed, and those litigations could have been avoided. Thank you.
Is it? Extremely hot in here, I'm just extremely nervous, maybe? Good evening. I want to thank everybody for coming out. I know it is hot in here, and it's good to see this turnout, the number of people that turned out here to come listen to us speak. My name's Andy Hofer. I'm running for Okanagan County Commissioner in District 2. A little bit about myself, I was born in Brewster. I grew up over in Winthrop, my dad's, mom and dad's ranch. I went through the Met湖 Valley School District, and then went on to Washington State University, where I got a degree in agricultural technology and management. I then went out and got a job and was able to fly all over this country. And every time I was out on one of those jobs, I kept thinking, "Man, I want to get home." I really love this place. I love, I love Okanagan County, and I want to see it prosper. For the last seven years, I've been managing North Valley Lumber, and three years prior to that, I managed the Winthrop Hardware Store. There are going to be, coming up in the next four years, there are going to be multitudes of topics that come up for discussion. We are going to discuss the economy, we're going to discuss the budget, we're going to discuss water, we're going to discuss bears, wolves, we're going to discuss land use. All of these subjects are going to come up, and it's going to be the commissioner's job to listen to the people and to hear what they're saying, because people of Okanagan County are such intelligent, hardworking people, and they have answers to these problems. They They live these problems. They know what's going on with them. And to not listen to them would be very remiss. I feel that another major subject that is going to come up is our economy. We are, we are going to, with the Buckhorn Mine going out of business, we are going to lose $1.2 million of revenue for this county. We are going to have to come up with solutions that are not going to be a burden for the taxpayers, but that are going to help keep our economy, our county and our economy vibrant for our kids when they want to move back here and farm or work at a retail store or whatever. We have to be able to provide a place for them to come home. I went way off track with my speech there, so I gotta get back on here. These are, these are two, just a list of topics that I want to be engaged in with everyone in this room and everyone in this county. I want people to be able to call me on the phone and talk to me about a problem. I want people to be able to come into the Commissioner's office and express what's going on and express their discontent with something I've said or express their gratitude for something I did. I think that is the way that politics has to be in order for us to get along. We are, Okanagan County is like a jigsaw puzzle. We have the Methow Valley. We have the South Okanagan. We have the North Okanagan. And there is not a blanket statement that we can put on this county about all these different places. We have to treat everybody as individuals and try to work together to find some common ground that we can not maybe fully agree on, but that everyone feels like they've had a fair shot at discussing the problem and that the ultimate outcome, people will know that all the sides were heard before the decision was made, which is good process. So, thank you very much for coming. I appreciate you looking.
I usually do it this way. Stan Kavistat from the Chilowest. Sorry about my attire. I made a point to wear a red, white and blue shirt. A white cowboy hat, Sam and Billy. But I was on my way home from the job today and I didn't get there. My cuffs are rolled up. I went to roll them down and they're full of chaff and all those things you get from walking through the woods all day. So, they're rolled up. This is the way I look normally. That little flinch from that shoulder that doesn't work as good as a chin anymore. I grew up in Watcombe County. Watcombe County was in the top 10 dairy producing counties in the nation for years and years and years. The logging industry, the pulp mill. My dad started out in the CCs during the war, quit high school. Forty dollars a month, thirty I went to grandma and grandpa and ten to him. Then he went to work for the Forest Service building trails and fighting fires and stuff. And back in those days, when they went out, they were out for two or three weeks at a time and sleeping in wet sleeping bags. So, 23 years old, I think he was, he went back. He went to the pulp mill, went to work. We wonder what's wrong with our economy. I believe a lot of it is our environmental movement that has shut so many things down. I think it's $79 is what it costs a group to stop a timber sale or this housing project or that. I don't think that's right. And it costs the DNR, the Forest Service, hundreds of thousands to fight that litigation. The Buckhorn Mine's a good example. Those people started 10 years ago on Phase 2 and last year they weren't any closer to getting Phase 2 approved by the Forest Service. So, they're shutting the mine down. So, now we have all those families in Republic and Orville or wherever they live that have made a good living, have bought a house, young couples say. Now what are they going to do? All because, why? You know, can't we get this thing working together? Somebody asked me about how I feel about the copper mine a couple meetings ago. I don't know how I feel about the copper mine, but you can't just hear mine and say, no, let's look at it, you know? Is it going to be good? Is it not going to be good? But you just can't put a blanket policy on this thing. Now I'm getting off track. But anyhow, the dairy industry in Watcombe County, well, you can just look at the Capitol Press any day and see how many dairies have gone down, down, down. It's just one rule after another that keep you getting hammered on those people. And I don't have my glasses. Keep county government open to the public. Getting Okanagan County back on track. Listen to input, react in a responsible way. Entice new business and create new jobs. And that's a catch 22. How do we attract the business in here? I call it not in my backyard syndrome. I was in the woods from 80, from 73 till 85. Then I went to construction. And what I've seen a ton on construction is a guy buys his five acres or his lot and then he doesn't want that guy to build the house on his five acres or his lot. I call it not in my backyard syndrome. And we face that quite a bit here. You know, I've got a nice place, 34.46 acres or something like that. And my nearest neighbor is about a quarter mile across the field and there's 160 acres next to me that can be developed. And I'm going, gee, what's it going to be like when I get neighbors? You know, but that's, if I didn't want neighbors, I should buy that land. And the same thing is how do we create jobs? And yet keep Okanagan County small like we want it? You know, that's, we've got the railroad. We've got a great big airport, probably the largest one outside of Moses Lake. And I feel they could be utilized in a better way. Thank you. Oh, I got about 30 seconds left. The other big deal is weeds. Every one of you people in here like me give a letter from the county. If you don't keep care of your weeds, we're going to fine you. What about the DNR? What about the Forest Service? What about the game department? I think we need to get with those people and get a working relationship that'll help some of this. Thank you.
Meetings Act mean to you. And how would you or do you ensure that it isn't violated? Do you support, yes or no, recording Commissioner meetings?
No, I'm good. Yes, absolutely. I support recording meetings. I think that the minutes should be put out the day after the meeting's done. I don't know logistically if that's possible, but open meetings to me mean that if there is something on the agenda for Monday that people know about it on Friday at least. I mean, every, people in here work. They're out farming. They're at a job. They're at home. You can't just post something on a Sunday and expect a bunch of people to show up on a Monday. It's not going to work. So, I absolutely support open meetings. I, there are only a few times where you would have to go into executive session. And that is you can't speak people's names while you're out, while you're in an official forum.
Well, the Open Public Meetings Act is really a tough one for county commissioners because there's only three of them. So, you've got two people, you've got a quorum. And it's pretty easy to start talking amongst two people, two people that might have, want to make the same decision. And those two people talk without being in the public. They've had a meeting that violates the Open Meetings Act and then they can make a decision that kind of takes things away. That's a really challenge with the structure of the counties anyway, with three people making the decision. And the other part about having meetings recorded, I understand, I've worked for several cities and towns over the years and lots of times they don't record them because anything that's said in that recording then could be used against them or misunderstood. But on the other hand, I would rather have them recorded than, and so the public knows what's going on, than have these minutes that just have a little bit of information. So, one of the things that's helped me in my work a lot these days is having this group that comes in and they're taking notes. Well, that helps because it kind of fills in the details. Thank you.
I agree with Chris that it's quite difficult with only three commissioners to not have a quorum like tonight. But if it's made public and policies are not discussed and no decision is made, that's acceptable. And yeah, I agree, meetings should be recorded for the public's best interest. And like Andy was saying, it'd be real nice to have the agendas put up in a week in advance because people can't take time off from jobs and it's important to have public attendance so that public input is heard, listened to. Thank you.
Well, open public meetings I fully support. Executive sessions, there's only a few things, theories, you can go into executive sessions. Contract litigation and performance evaluations, labor contracts and perform, I think I said performance evaluations. Anyway, there's only specific things that we can go into executive session about and that's what we do. Part of that is protection liability because if we speak employees' names out in the, in the public in a certain manner, they could turn around and sue the county. So, we are very careful with this. We are very active in a lot of our discussions right now. And obviously with the lawsuits that probably would have been filed 12 years ago if decisions would have been made at that point, we're dealing with all of that. The minutes, we corrected those and now we are trying to get those out either the day of or the very next day. Our agendas go out, we try to go out Thursday.
This question wouldn't be on, you know, wouldn't be in front of us. And I think it's been well discussed. It wouldn't be in front of us unless we were talking about trust. And there's some mistrust amongst the community with the county commissioners these days. You know, there are ways to fix that. And ultimately what it is, is that you want to know that there aren't things happening behind your back. You know, you want to know that what is on the agenda is what's happening in front of you. I can't fix that for all of you. But what I can do is I can say, you know, really the most important thing is that you need to be able to feel that your county commissioners are accessible, that you can walk up and ask them a question and that when they're in that meeting, you know what's on their mind. I don't know that this is an issue of process. I think this is more of an issue of community trust at this point.
Well, open public meetings is a necessity and I fully believe in open public meetings there. And as Commissioner, we have followed through with that. We have not had a closed door sessions there other than having to go into executive session there. And as she defined there, that is required at certain times here. And in the executive sessions, there's no decisions made. Only discussion of the concerns there and the names and what goes on in the executive session does not go out that door. So, that's important that those are uphill. And as far as recording of the meetings, they are recorded. There's notes taken there on our open public meetings there with the comprehensive plans, certain ones such as that. We do have a recording going, so everything is verbatim. It's hard to get verbatim clarity on our everyday meetings there. So, that's why we keep with the process of the secretary keeping our notes. Thank you. Transparency, we all talk about. One thing happened here a couple weeks ago that I don't fully understand. We've taken from putting our legal notices in the Okanagan Chronicle or the Met Chronicle, whatever it is, to the Orville paper and the Methow paper. Pennies wise, it would have been cheaper to stay with Chronicle because they have a bigger circulation. So, now in order to find out what's going on in the legal notices, you have to go online or go find a Orville paper or Methow paper. I'm wondering about transparency here. Thank you.
Okay, the next question is, what is your decision-making process when confronted with a new or unfamiliar issue facing the county? Does she have anyone to start?
Sure. I'm going to have to write that one down. Anytime we're faced with anything new that we, I personally don't understand, I do the research. I reach out to the public members that would know about this particular issue, whether it's a business, industry, private people. We check with various levels of people that we can reach out and touch and get that information. So, at that point, we know what we're reviewing. We can look into it a little bit more to make the best decision, the educated decision that will represent the county and all of our citizens instead of just making a rash decision, not knowing what you're doing. Thank you.
Well, as an attorney, this is like, you know, this is my day-to-day. This is my bread and butter. My job is to make decisions for other people oftentimes and to research those decisions and, you know, know where we're going. But oftentimes, you know, what that is for me is getting on the phone and making sure that you talk to someone who's knowledgeable in that place, you know, day one. And then the other side of that is making sure that you've got all the information from your client or the opposing party if you can. And I think you can really bring that back into community government. And, you know, what it's really about is making sure that you're open to hearing all of the issues, that people trust you to make good decisions and that they want to come with you with the information that's required. You know, other than that, for me, my job's to then, you know, look at the legalities of things, make sure that we're following the right process. But for me, that's day-to-day business and it's not as exciting as getting to interact with my community, but I think it's something I'm good at. Thank you.
Well, dealing with everyday decisions there, if they come before you, it's first and foremost is to understand what the question is and be yourself educated on what the answer should be. And ask, there again, ask the questions to the people that if you don't know, find out the people that do know. A lot of our decisions are, first of all, before we finalize a lot of our decisions, we take a look at our legal counselor and make sure that what we're doing is correct and the legal process. Can I pick up sticks or something here? No, if you don't know what it is, go find out. There's lots of knowledge out there. I've always had a deal on the construction that I tell the crew, if your idea is better than mine, I want to hear about it. I don't have to take it. But on the other hand, if their idea is better than mine and I don't take it, maybe I should not be the boss. So, you've got to keep an open mind on these things and do your research. Find somebody that knows about it and make the decision that way. Thank you.
I think Stan must have been on my grandpa's ironwork in the pool. I, if something new is presented to you that you have no idea about, obviously you have to go out and do the research. You have to figure out what it is that's going on, who are the opponents and who are the proponents. I like the extremes because you know pretty much where your boundaries are at that point. If you talk to the people who are absolutely for something and absolutely against something, then you have a place to start. You can come together then and you can give all of the information that you see relevant and try to make an informed decision that will hopefully be, will work for both parties. Maybe not 100%, but hopefully both of them will come to terms with the decision that comes forth.
I was hoping he wouldn't say that, but I agree with him. And that's exactly where I'm coming from too, is that I don't have a go-to source on any particular subject. So, if it's a subject that sounds like it's controversial, I want to find out what everybody's saying and not just go to my favorite answer. And I'm afraid that that's what we see more often today than anything else. And I'm inclined to get an opinion from both ends of the spectrum and in-between, and by the way, the internet's real good too.
Two of my greatest traits are an open mind and the desire to learn. When faced with an issue, I want to understand it from all sides, look at it. And if I'm faced with making a decision about that, I strive to make a decision based on the facts, not on my personal belief system. I was a wildland firefighter for seven years, and on the hotshot crew, hotshot crews are high-reliability organizations. Means for the amount of danger that you're in, you have very little injury. One of the tenants is the deference to expertise. That means you listen to your experts and you heed their advice. It trumps the hierarchy. Thank you.
Okay, how do you balance contracting out county services versus eliminating jobs in the county? If you are looking at contracting out services, what factors do you or would you take into consideration? And Chris, why don't you start?
That's got a wrong answer, but first of all, you can't look at contracting as your ideal. You really have to look at every particular proposal for contracting differently. And you have to make sure that you're not in a situation where you're creating favoritism when you do that. And that's difficult to do in a smaller, you know, community with less population. But honestly, every one of the different types of contracting opportunities needs a very good analysis. You just can't base it on your thoughts that government doesn't do a good job.
This again relates back to the other question. You've got to look at all sides and make decisions based on individual instances. Off the cuff, I'm more of a proponent of keeping jobs in county and keeping, not privatizing public sector jobs. I believe that the public jobs that we have provide a great boon to the economy, and we need to keep that. Privatizing out right now, we're sending trucks down to Wenatchee to be worked on. We've got mechanics here. We used to have a mechanic at the county shop. We need to include those back in the economy. Thank you.
So, I'll start with the mechanic positions. We've advertised, we have several jobs, if you look at our county website. Our mechanic position has been difficult to fill because we are requiring a CDL license. CDL licenses aren't as easy to get anymore, and they're pretty much a liability for that person that has that liability license, or that commercial driver's license. So, that has created some problems filling the positions. We've even asked the question, "Do we need a CDL license for a mechanic?" Mechanics want to mechanic. They don't need to necessarily have the CDL. Contract services, we evaluate. Right now, we don't just fill positions because those positions are gone. We evaluate those positions, and we're hearing from our private businesses, "We've got machinery sitting right here. It's not being used. You're competing with us." All we're doing is looking into the situations and asking the questions, because our budget is shrinking, and to be able to provide the services that we need to provide to you, the taxpayers.
I'm all for retaining our community employees as they are. I think that they do a great job. And I think there's a couple of reasons that we often miss, which is, you know, one of the things that you get from a county employee is wisdom. If someone's worked in your shop, if someone's worked on your roads, if someone's worked in your community for the last 20 years, you've got a great amount of wisdom there that you can tap into. And, you know, I think that we talk about, you know, moving forward with things all the time, but oftentimes, in order to move forward, you have to be looking at the history of what's come before you. You know, Stan was talking about, you know, a bunch of roads at a meeting that I was at just recently, and I thought, "I didn't know any of that." You know, I was completely lost on how you could save money by preparing gravel roadbed correctly. And if someone works for you, if you have employment that's part of your community, that's working with you as a whole, you get to tap into that resource for wisdom. And I think that that's one of the main boons that we don't look at when we consider contracting things out. Thank you.
Well, to begin with, there's a lot of big projects out there that the county undertakes there that are necessary to contract out, that they don't have the staff or the expertise to do. County can't afford to hold that kind of equipment just for these special projects out there that are funded by state and federal entities. For example, the Seven Devils Road is being worked on right now up there going up to Conconelli is contracted out to Granite Construction. They're a big outfit, and they know how to get a job done right. And all we have right now is an inspector on the job there. A lot of our jobs out there, county jobs there, I look at it, number one, is what's the best dollar, what's the best service for the dollars spent? And how is it going to get the end product accomplished for this county? So, I am for private jobs, as long as it's economical and serviceable to the county. Thank you.
Not mean to get in your face, Ray, but it's Westco, Outskull, Kansas, general contractor. Granted, it's just the payment contractor of the Seven Devils. That's where I've been the last two months.
Thank you.
If they don't get that subgrade right on the east end, we're going to have a bump. I stopped to talk to the superintendent about it today. I don't want a bump. No. Every job that we ship out, I understand our courthouse is getting cleaned by an outfit in Wenatchee, our weeds are getting sprayed by an outfit out of Ellensburg. Those are all dollars that should stay in our county. Every $10,000 stays in our county, stays in our county. It doesn't go to Wenatchee, doesn't go to Ellensburg, it doesn't go to Tinbuck too. So I think it's real. Yeah, we might not make money. Maybe they're $10 cheaper, but in the long run, is it cheaper? Guys gotta look at that. Thank you.
I am all for pre-enterprise. I think that if you could contract out services to local businesses, I mean, that's going to boost our economy. However, if you, as a county, can offer a suite of services like spraying, janitorial, you can't just look at them as single entities. You've got to look at them as a group and say, "Okay, as a group, we can provide this service cheaper than pulling them all apart." Not only that, when you pull them all apart, you lose them. So, it's really hard to get those services back under your own control if you want to. Thanks.
Okay, the next question. Do you think it is important for the public to have access to public land, and how do you feel about keeping roads open for emergencies? And Ted?
Don't laugh. I argued, you know, I argued to keep Three Devils Road open. That was my job. I was hired to do it. I think I did a good job doing it. You know, the fact finder found with us on that, and the decision was made the other way. You know, so that's my background as far as that goes. Public lands, you know, we got a twofold public land interest here, is that we either can have industry, and a lot of times, you know, the state or the federal government says, you know, "Hey, we're not contracting that out right now." If they're not going to contract it out to where we can make, you know, the big dollars there, well then, we should be having open public lands to as many people as we can. You know, in the Chilwist, leaving that road open, one of the things that wasn't looked at is for every person who lived on that strip, for every person who lives there, if they have that access into the national forest, that makes their land more valuable. You know, if someone's going to buy that from them, that is a dollar in their pocket. And all you got to do is keep that road open. All you got to do is say, "There is a forest. Go and enjoy." And I think that if we had more access to those things, we'd have more value in the county.
Well, I too believe in keeping roads open to the public for access to our public lands there, as long as it isn't intruding on private property rights there and costing our county extra dollars there that cost all the taxpayers dollars there. So, I believe in keeping access to them, and we're talking about, the finger's pointing on our, the Chilwist Road there, the Three Devils Road. I just wanted to make the point there that there's other accesses to the state and federal lands right on up the Chilwist. Landers Road will take you right up to the state road lands there and on into the South Summit on federal lands. There's numerous accesses into there, so with that in mind, I think that that's been taken care of. As far as the rest of the public lands, we're working right now in conjunction with the Forest Service to push to keep all of our roads open to public.
Public access, yes. There's way more behind that Three Devils Road than any of us can understand. If it wasn't for that Three Devils Road, the Met House wouldn't have been settled. Just a historical fact should have been enough said. The rest of our game department land, our DNR land, national forest land, public access. I'm with the Backcountry Horseman. The foresters wanted to start cutting out a bunch of our roads a few years ago, not maintaining them where you can get there on a four-wheel-drive vehicle. The Backcountry Horseman says, "Wait a second. You've got a trailhead there with a handicap restroom." So that means you've got to maintain that road so a guy with his wheelchair on the back of his Volkswagen bus or whatever he's driving can get there, and that's what kept a lot of those roads open. Thank you.
I definitely am for public property. I hunt, I fish, I hike. I love all those things, and I want to keep public lands public. Three Devils Road, I mean, everybody kind of knows what's going on. I think it boiled down to very poor process. And I'm not going to say too much more about it, but I definitely do not think that vacating roads in this county is going to be a good thing. I think once you give it up, it's gone. You're not going to get it back from private individuals. So, thank you.
Well, I'm for public lands, and every time I see a road vacation, I take a real good look at it. I used to live up on the loop, and I'd travel over to see friends over in the Chilwist. And speaking of Landers Road, I don't know what the heck those signs mean on that road that says they're going to skin you if you drive on it. I think the county sheriff should go over there and take those off there, because that's a threat, and that's going to get somebody hurt. So, I really think that these roads, especially if they go to public lands, have to be looked at real careful. I prefer they stay open. And the more development you see, the more you're going to see those roads get closed up.
Something like 74% of our land in the county is public land. We can't afford to privatize that or sell it. The Forest Service, DNR, Fish and Wildlife, those public lands provide so much to enrich this county, as Andy spoke to, hunting, fishing, hiking, tourism. It brings in a lot more than we see. And as far as public roads and closing, I think I can speak to the Forest Service a little bit, in that I know they're closing some roads that they can't maintain. There could be a viable reason to close roads if it helps to maintain other roads. Again, it's one of those things that's, you want to be open to the idea, but I prefer to keep roads open, have access. Thank you.
It's unfortunate that everyone hasn't done their homework on the Three Devils Road. The 228 petitioners that signed, 17% live out of the county alone. 50% didn't even live within 15 miles of the Three Devils Road. So, we had the petitioners in their deposition say that they never once used that road for emergency escape. They had other routes. They admitted they had other routes. This was all under oath. So, the information that's going around compared to the information that's true and correct, I encourage everyone to look at that, because that will support the decision that we made. I'm open, I am open to public lands are our public lands. Thank you.
Do you think it is important to involve the public in the budget process? If so, how will you do that in the next budget cycle? And Ashley?
I think the public input is necessary for all decisions, but I don't think that the public is going to be deciding the budget for the entire county, per se. Again, having a clear and transparent system so that people know when you're discussing the budget, and they can have the time for input if necessary. Thank you.
I think if you check around a little bit, look at the municipal research website. You'll see some examples of how counties and cities involve the public in their budget process. At least they look at, show you where the revenues come from, where most of the expenditures are, what they mean. That's very important for the public to understand, whether or not they're involved in making that decision. At least they'll understand, and I think that's really important. There's ways to explain this stuff graphically, and I think that that's what we really need, and that's what I want to do.
Just for a little bit of clarity, all of the departments bring their budget before the board of commissioners. And it's the board of commissioners' job then to balance the budget based on the individual budgets that all these departments have brought forth. I don't think, honestly, that it would be in the best interest of the county or all of those departments to have people constantly telling you, "Well, this line item doesn't work. This line item should be, you know, good." The budgets are online. You can see exactly where. I went in, looked at all of the budgets from the last eight years. You can see exactly where the money's going. But to have public input on, you know, getting in on the nitty-gritty of these things, I don't think that it would be in the best interest of the county. I think it would just slow the, probably slow the process down. Thank you.
Too many cooks spoil the stew. You're looking at a guy that didn't balance his own checkbook for five years. I didn't balance any checks, but yeah, like Andy said, everybody's department. The guy's got to be careful, because you're going to get some outside interest going to their outside gate, you know? So it's got to be transparency, see, come back to play, and it all has to work balanced, no taxes. Some one of these days, taxes will have to raise, but first of all, we've got to look things over, make sure they're done properly. Thank you.
Well, the budget process, when we get into the budget, we, it is, our doors are open to public at all times. They can come in and sit down and listen, but to have the public get in and participate in how to take a look at revenues coming in, to fund the revenues going out, and determine what's needed in each of the departments, and to understand the bar's codes to how to connect the dots there. It would be too confusing, and so, in the sense that if the public wants to come in and watch, that's fine. We welcome that, but to participate in discussion, that would be a stoppage there on there. We'd never get the budget done as it is now. As it is now, it's a well over two months process there. Not every day, but it's, we meet on the times when we can get our auditor and our treasurer and the three commissioners together to go by line by line item there. And, thank you.
So I've got two points here. One is, you know, Andy's right, absolutely right, is that what you're really getting is you're getting the, you know, different departments and you're getting their budgets and your jobs to balance it. And that's where I think that you've got to be in good communication with those people so that when you come to them and you say, hey, I'm sorry, you're not going to get this, you know, because we're doing these other things, that's where your communication, you know, with all the people who work in those departments and that are key. The one place where I do think that we could, you know, be discussing things more with the public is that I do think that, you know, our taxes are directly linked to the cities. You know, depending on what they annex or where a business is, you know, we're all connected here. So I think that there could be more communication between the cities and the county government and also there could be a lot more communication between us and the tribe. The tribe is, you know, going through and creating some really big projects and the county should be more closely aligned and paying attention to what's going on there because, you know, that's where economic drive can be created is when you can, you know, include a county, a tribe and a town to make something happen.
We do have really good relationships with the tribe in a lot of discussions. We have the county transportation system, the roads, it used to be the RTPO. We're working with the cities and the towns and the tribe, creating and organizing, coordinating all of those road projects. So that is going on. Our public process is open during our budget discussions. After that, if people sitting in the audience have questions, us commissioners, we're on call 24 hours a day. We get those calls. We get the calls to ask for questions, but we do go through all these budgets line by line because one year it could be 2,000 in travel or fuel and the next year goes to 12,000 in fuel, should create some questions for accountability. Right now, this is the first time our budgets have been, monthly current budgets have been online and that's because of this new working relationship and also with our finance committee working with us during the whole budget process instead of previously, it was pretty much one person making the decision on budgets. Now it's a full committee.
What ideas do you have to improve our economy? And Stan?
I kind of hit on this earlier, you know, with our rail, our airport. The spotted owl ran me out of the logging and said that we're going to make us all, give us jobs in tourism. So I guess I'm a tourist guide now, but I just work construction to subsidize that. Tourism is a big deal. Working on that highway up there, the Concanelli Highway, I didn't realize how many vehicles are going to and from Concanelli. We have a great backyard. So the tourist is a big factor. Carl, wasn't it you that said during the winter, a couple of winters ago, $11 million was brought into the Met House just from cross-country skiing and whatnot? So we've got to find the right opportunities and attract the people to our community and measure the size of footprint they're going to have on us. Thank you.
The economy here is, it's difficult. We don't have a lot of industry, we don't have a lot of tech jobs or anything like that. Agriculture is our biggest player here. I think that we need to, we have to market of Northern County. We are tourist attractions, we have excellent agriculture, we have a broad range of things that people from out of the area, they want. And I honestly believe that we have to start taking a look really at our marketing strategy within the county and figuring out, can we sell more beef to high-end restaurants in Seattle? Can we sell more of our agricultural products to somewhere else? I also think that we need more.
Well, I think the first thing we need to do is make sure we've got a predictable place to do business, a place that it's not full of controversy and craziness. I sure as heck would be reluctant to relocate a business where I see conflict all the time. The other thing is, is that when we talk about tourism, by the way, I'm doing this business right now. Identify those businesses that look like they'll succeed and go in there and make sure they got the infrastructure to continue to succeed. If there's businesses that look like they're failing, step in and ask if there's any help that you can give them. But one of the things you've got to pay close attention to, first off, is the businesses that exist here now, including agriculture, and then go out there and do your recruiting stuff. But we have to have a predictable environment to do business in.
Over 50% of our jobs are in two sectors, agriculture, which includes farming, fishing and hunting, and then government, including local, federal, tribal government. That's over 50% of our jobs in the county. So we know where to focus energy on the big players. I think that's important to keep those economies vibrant and keep them working because they employ a lot of people. But the other part is that that's not a very diverse economy. In biology, we know that diversity is the key to success. If you have just one strain genetically, you're much more susceptible to disease. So the same is for the economy. We need to look to diversify the jobs and I've been in contact with the Economic Alliance, which is a company here in Okanagan, to try and figure out what that actually looks like. Thank you.
I sit on the Economic Alliance Board of Directors and Ronnie is doing an excellent job on behalf of this county, promoting this county, trying to invite new businesses here. But we do have to support the businesses that we already have here, try to figure out how to keep them here and in business, especially after two major state record-setting fire disasters that have impacted everyone, everyone and their business, and they're trying to survive. So our concentration also needs to be on those to keep them in business. We also need to let everybody know that this county is open for business, for our tourism and recreation because most media has left that impression that we are all burnt and we are not open. A lot of work still needs to be done with that. Our Tourism Council is doing a great job that the commissioners fully support and, you know, by promoting the entire county and the small businesses within our county. Thank you.
Business retention, you know, I think that's, you know, the number one goal. You've got to be looking at what's already there, you've got to make sure that you preserve it. You know, open for business, that's important. And I'm going to say something that's, you know, maybe not popular with everyone in Okanagan County, but this state voted to legalize marijuana. And, you know, what we've done now is we're closing these farms. We put a moratorium on putting in new farms. That's not open for business. That's not open to what has already been passed by the state. You know, if I had my druthers, I don't know if I'd go that way, but we already have, there's no point in our county losing out on that industry that's there. You know, you talked about not in my backyard, well, there's an industry that's right here, ready to make money, ready to create jobs. You know, the other things that we really need to be looking at is healthcare, education and making a place where people want to come back to, where people want to invest their lives so that you get smart, educated people wanting to come back home or their friends or their family wanting to be a part of this community because they are the people who are going to be a ready source of jobs and a ready source of driving economy.
Well, first of all, recognize that this county has a vast array of business on the west side over in my valley. The northern part of that is a huge tourist mecca and I've worked with the tourist industry up there to help enhance that, protect that and promote it. I serve as on the lodging tax board there, chairman of the Okanagan County Lodging Tax there, which we take a look at the dollars brought in by the tourist industry and then spend out for advertisement, put out for advertisement to promote the tourist industry there. And the county has a well-rounded promotion going on across the borders, not only in Washington here, but also in Canada and throughout there. And so our tourist industry is going to be there.